I'd like to welcome you here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from getting started. Before we begin, I invite you to stand and join us in the pledge and then Rick Evans will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear only Father, we thank you again, Lord, for bringing us all here safe again tonight. We pray that you will keep all the citizens in Springdale safe, Lord, and bless them all, Lord. We pray that you will give us all the guidance that we need tonight and on the items that you have before us. Keep us all safe on our trip home in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right. I'd like to welcome again to this regular meeting, the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, July 25, 2017. We have large print agendas over here. Bill's got them there if that would be of any help to any of you. And that said, I'll ask our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Rick Culver?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Colby Fulfer?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rick Evans?
Here.
Jim Reed?
Okay, thank you. Item four, this is the portion of each council meeting that the council sets aside for comments from our citizens. If there are any residents of Springdale that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda, I would invite you to come at this time. Please come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief and understand that no action will be taken on your item tonight. Yes, sir.
David Arthur, 6869 Stony Point Lane. I need some help. The city needs help. We've got a problem with our code enforcement. If there is more out there, well, the instance being, I've got a house on Henshaw, put out the stuff, called, was told when to put it out, let's put it out Sunday evening. We'll pick it up next week. Cool. I come back the next day to finish up stuff, lo and behold, don't tell me inanimate objects do not reproduce. Now I've got two vacuum cleaners, a kitchen sink, and a TV in the pile. This is stuff y'all won't pick up. If they throw a whole bunch of stuff out, they refuse to do anything, and then it's considered unsightly. We put out the right amount, we called to make sure and do this, then people come by and, you know, they don't want to get rid of their --
Had to.
They throw it in. We've got to figure out a way to keep, like, right now, I've got an $897 fine against me over a deal like that. The renter moved out. He said he's leaving. I said, "Okay, so what about this stuff I'm going to get rid of?" I said, "Call for the bulky waste pickup." Okay. He looks on the side of trash can, what's it say? Waste Management. Who does he call? Waste Management. They tell him no more than eight cubic feet. Okay, he sets it out there. Code enforcement has been by and got on to him because he had boxes and stuff under the carport. He tells the gentleman, "I'm moving. Give me a little bit of a break." The guy says, "No, the rules are," and that's it. And he rode him, even though he had been told, "I'm moving. Give me a break." The guy says, "No, this is the rules. That's the way it is." So now that falls under the thing of no notice for the next 12 months, we can come back and hammer you. So they come back by for a reinspection. They don't have to notify anybody about anything. If they find something that isn't right, they can and do take care of it and send a bill. He told the gentleman he was moving. They came back and re-inspected. They saw the stuff at the curb. No notice on the waste pickup here in town, but he had called Waste Management. Now, it was a mistake, no doubt about it, but the man tried to do the right thing. Okay, it wasn't on there. I was not called. Code enforcement was told, "I'm moving." So when they come back, they look, there's no one in the house. Okay, the tenant is gone. There's no one to speak to there. They could have called me, which I think they should have done, having been told that the gentleman was moving out. I should have been notified and given a chance to go over there and pick this up because what was there would have fit in the back of a Chevrolet S10 pickup truck. But I got billed $897 to haul off this mound of trash that's eight feet in a circle and three foot tall. That's not fair to me. That's not fair to me at all. I didn't do it. Had I been told this, I'd have been over there so fast your hair'd have laid back. I had a -- got a house down there on Sycamore. The man in there is a martialise. He's a preacher. They rode him up because he had coolers and too many chairs on the carport. He asked the guy, he hands it to me, he says, "What is this? I don't understand." As, and my tenant tells me, as he asks the gentleman again, "What's going on? What is this about?", that the man walking away turned over his shoulder and said, "It's written down. Read it," and kept walking. That's no way to treat someone. That's absolutely wrong. He called me, I came over and talked to him, and finally figured out what it was about. You know, I can read it, I understand it. So it took me 10 minutes to get him to understand what's going on. If we're going to deal with folks, martialise, Hispanic, whatever, we do it in the court. We have a translator. Let's do this out in the field. When you're giving a man a ticket for something and he tells you he doesn't understand, and he's obviously a foreigner, the city should be doing something to be able to impart the knowledge to him what he's done wrong. He's standing there going, "I don't understand." But the main thing about that instance is when he didn't understand that the guy just turns over his shoulder as he's walking off and says, "It's written down. Read it." Now, you could look at a person who's martialise, and I'm not, nothing meant, but you could look at him and tell they are martialise. If he, good chance he's not going to understand the language. Why in the devil would you treat a person that way? That's just absolutely unacceptable. Absolutely unacceptable.
I agree, if that's what happens, so we'll have to check with that.
Well, he's a preacher and he told me this. I'll take it 100%.
Okay.
And at that point in time, virtually every house on Sycamore Place got ticketed. Now, at times, yes, I've got to admit, that's a pretty funky, rough street at times, you know? Yeah, sometimes you've got to get in there and get after it. But to treat a person that way, I don't think's right, but the main thing about this thing now that I've got this bill of $897, the man made an attempt to do the right thing. The code enforcement man was told, "I'm moving." They come back, there's no one in the house. I, as the landlord, should have been notified. Absolutely should have been notified. There's no excuse for having come in there and picked this up and, as I said, stuff that would have sat in the back of a little bitty pickup truck and then billed me $897 to haul that trash off? If that's the case, and this may be a little flippant smart, I want to go to work for you folks and I'll do it on halves at that kind of money.
Yeah.
You know, that's a little bit steep for a pickup load of trash. And they did mow the front yard. And I'll do, I'll throw that in, too.
I assumed there was some more. And this council and code enforcement's made it clear, we don't intend to be low bid on anything because we don't want to be doing it.
Well, I understand that. But what I'm saying is that there's no reason for it, first off, to have been that expensive. And the second thing is, I should have been notified. That's the major, that's the number one point.
Right.
When they were told that there was no one there, that the man is moving, when they come back and they find the house empty, there is no excuse, in my opinion. No way, no wave-shaped form of fashion to haul that trash off and not notify the landlord. I think I deserve that much respect from the city that, yes, there is a problem, but I should be notified of it. It should not be just this draconian thunk, "You owe me a grand." That's wrong. That's not right.
All right, David, let us look in, let us look into it and we'll, we'll find out.
That's why I'm here because I know some of y'all are on the committee about doing this thing.
Right.
This needs to be straightened out.
Yeah.
This is not right at all because, I mean, you and I both know, you'd be mad if it happened to you.
Good. Thank you, David. Anyone else need to address the council? Okay, moving on to item five. Minutes will be provided at first August meeting. All right. Procedural motions.
For A and B?
We have a motion for A and B?
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item seven, we have an update on the criminal justice complex. Roy Decker from Duval Decker Architects is here. Roy, come on up. Roy gave a presentation to committee last night and we've asked him to come and give a little pared-down version, but at least give an update so our residents can see what, what we're looking at and the direction we're going. It's early in the process, but...
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. It's good to see you all. It's good to be before you again. As you know, we are in the middle of the process, but this is a very inclusive process and we're trying to involve your staff, your leadership, and this council in this process of helping steer what will, what will be a great building for the city of Springdale. So I, before I get started, I just want to introduce my, my team because we're, this is really a team effort and I want to start with Brett Couples, who was right there, our project manager from our office, and Brian Mead from Duberry. And Brian is a key member, and I, a key because he's helping us program and research every single need in every, excuse me, every department. He's doing a terrific job. And Gail Shepherd is here from High Jackson, our local partner, very good architects that are helping us making sure this really fits into your community and is built well. And we're joined tonight, we hope, in a few minutes by our new partner, Mike Davis from Milestone Construction. Mike, you want to come on up? Construction manager, bringing a construction manager on early in a project like this is essential because we're going to, we're not going to build this project in pieces until two or two years away. So we want to be sure that we've got a team member who's helping us estimate, keep costs predictable and controlled, construction logic. So we're glad we were, we participated in the selection for a good construction manager and I think you all have chosen a very good one, so. So I'm going to give a brief update on the progress of the design right now and what we're doing here today. When I was here last, we had a public meeting and we invited the community citizen input and we got some really good comments, just a few citizens, but very good comments. And as you know, we've talked to all the departments a couple times now and there are things about the site and the site planning that are in a way designing themselves because they're, they're based on good public safety and, and, and public service. So I'm going to just show you a couple things real quickly. First of all, it's important to know where we are and that Springdale is the heart of northwest Arkansas. And it's, and that is made ever more present by the Razorback Greenway and Shiloh Square and that this, what is a major national level civic infrastructure improvement to this whole community comes right by your new site. Your master plan is an anchor and a foundation for everything we're doing, calling for an entrance from East Huntsville and a connection, a civic cultural district connection to Shiloh Museum. So there's another big citywide level kind of connection we're trying to make. And you've already got public buildings that are significant. Shiloh Square, the meeting hall, the high school, Amistri are all important existing parts of your community that we're working to connect to. I'm going quickly just so that you kind of see the, the connections we're trying to make. This project involves building a new criminal justice facility. It makes a lot of sense to move that to the north, to Huntsville. It allows the police to move quickly out to Huntsville in an emergency. It also allows us to have a secure parking and secure access for patrol and, and the judge and the staff between Allen Building and the new facility. The court makes sense to be in the middle between the, this building, administration building, and the new criminal justice facility, and it makes sense for all the public access to really come from the west. Right now, you mix public and private in this whole facility and we do need to move towards better security, but, but better public service, too. So this new facility is trying to make a much more engaging, open experience for all the citizens that come to your building, whether it's for court, police reporting, or for building permits. And then also make a public safety response support system for the police force, including patrol, training, and command, and also 911 and infrastructure, data centers. So all that is woven together with these two goals, good public service and, and good community protection. So the, the project starts by evaluating this building. We went through a very careful analysis, engineering, architectural, and use of this building. This building's tired. The mechanical systems, the electrical systems are on their last legs, as we hear. And so we, we're trying to save as much of this building as possible, but there are parts of it we are going to take down. The fins on the front, the oldest portions of the building and some of the portions of the building where the, where dispatch is now. Now, I'm showing you this early, but keep in mind that the renovation of this facility happens last. So I'm just showing you the sequence of thinking now, but keep in mind, this is still a two-phase project. Criminal justice building gets built first, then we come back and renovate this building. So these are the pieces. We, we planned for the demolition, we prepare for the new site, for the new criminal justice facility, and that's the first building that's built. And then that we move that as far north as we can to get, to get that space behind it and, and also to open up the space for the courts. To knit all this together and to keep, to fulfill the promise of good public service, we needed a way to, for the public to come in and go through security. So a single point of access, you'll see that in the center. We need expanded public parking on the west side. And we needed a way for all of the citizens, when they come for all the different business, to, to find their way easily, quickly, efficiently, and gracefully. So we have a street, an internal street, that after you move through security, you go right to building services, building department planning upstairs for mayor and council, and to the left to the courts and to the police. So there's a street, 12-foot wide street that connects all, the entire public experience, very clear, good wayfinding, and very efficient. In the back, we have emergency access to Johnson on the south and Huntsville on the north, and then the secure parking for patrol. So that's the foundation of the planning is each of the pieces, but again, public service and public safety. So here are the, all the other two pieces, adding the court in the middle. By the way, the court is much larger than you have now. Judge Harper saw 22,000 cases last year and sometimes has over 300 people in his courtroom. So that little courtroom is, is, has lasted for a long time, but is, but needs to be upgraded. And then all together, it comes together with new landscaping and this master plan promise of a green gateway from Huntsville into Spring Street and Mill Street, all the way down connecting, linking up with the Greenback, the Razorback Greenway and Shiloh Square. So it's not just the building that's a gateway, it's actually a park invitation to Springdale. And the, and the new civic municipal campus serves as a, a kind of introduction and a kind of building in the park for the whole community. So this is not architecture yet, it's not really designed yet. We're working towards that. It's going to be a rich building, it's going to be durable, it's going to last a long time. Most of all, it's going to be classic and not be faddish. We're going to make a building that's really, that you're going to be proud of, that's part of Springdale, that's, that's got good materials, good patterns, good details. And, and that's next. We're, we're working, our next steps, we, let me tell you this, we were here all day today confirming the detailed programs with all the departments and, and move, still moving things around, getting them in the right place. And very, your staff, the administration, and all the individuals that are going to work in this building have, are really part of this design. They are giving great feedback, they're engaged, and we're learning a lot and we're incorporating all their voices and, and needs in the building. That what happened all day today. Brian is exhausted because he talked all day long to everybody. And our next steps are now to make some drawings, do some preliminary engineering, and then get Mike involved. And Mike's going to help us evaluate different building systems, preliminary costs, and budgets. So we're still setting that budget, we're still setting the parameters in relation to the need, and in about a month, we will bring some early renderings back to you and start to show you what this all might look like.
Since it's not labeled, but it's on there, you're preliminary, we're, we're talking about the idea of a, in the, in the center, under the entrance or over the entrance, you're, that, that one addition in the middle of the building is a council room.
New council room.
New council room.
New council room. So as I said, everything wants to be at the front door and we found that the council room could be over, over that area because we do want all the public to focus in through that entrance and then come up on the second floor. Reasons it's on the second floor is we get that relationship of council support spaces. So on the back, I didn't mention this, there's a council, mayor, staff entrance on the back which is secure and, and all of you can come up into the building and come into the council chamber from the side, so not from the front doors anymore. Excuse me, you'll come around the side. And if you go into executive session, there's a, there's a, there's a meeting room that's, that you can go into, which is private, and then there's bathrooms and support spaces there. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a mature council chamber for a city of your size and located in a way that would help the public easily get there, elevator stairs, but also to function in the way that would, that you can do your business in the most dignified and professional way.
Ron, how many public parking spaces are you providing for?
There's about 150 public parking spaces and about 292 police and staff spaces.
And part of the reason so many police spaces is because we could, we'd have parking for two shifts, you know, as they, as they overlap.
That's right. So some of your patrol officers take cars home, but some don't when they're new. And, and then when you have a, a shift change, you've got some personal cars, you've got dispatch and staff cars, civilian police, and then you have a shift change which you have double police cars.
Now, there's no question we need, it looks like several buildings there will be removed, like the old Legion Hut and the old...
No, no, no.
You want to speak to that?
Yeah. So, so this drawing is just a diagram that shows how this plan in the future connects to your master plan. The only building actually that we're looking at taking down is the community engagement building to get some parking in there.
The old plumbing building.
Do one, I'm sorry.
The old plumbing building.
Yeah. And it's, it's where, if you look at that drawing, the, that's where they're showing parking.
Yeah.
So that would come down as part of this project. The other existing buildings, that would be sometime in the future.
Yeah, and, and we're just...
Yeah, because there's that, there's that Masonic Lodge and all that over there and the residence.
Yeah.
Yeah, one or two.
Two residences, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the drawings, it's, it's very diagrammatic just to show you that we, even with the buildings there, there's trees and it'll, it'll feel like a, a green entrance into the city.
I'm just curious, it looks like, you know, we're going to have to rely on a bunch of other public parking someplace else because there won't be enough in that short block to accommodate 150 spaces.
We, we, yeah, we, it's deceiving, we've got a lot of them in there, but the, the stress on parking is Thursdays during court and when they, when they, when he gets 300 people. Other days, the demand is lower.
Or, or when they know that the mayor's going to be here for a council meeting. Public will be here.
State, the state and city address is usually big night.
Yeah, yeah. They usually have to sell tickets and some, sometimes they, they scalp them, but just to detail.
And we, and we did not program that stress on the parking.
I think most of that goes...
I confess, we missed that, we missed that.
Most of that goes for cash, so I'm not sure it shows.
We, we missed that point. Thank you, sir. We will make that correction.
Something to keep in mind.
Okay. Any questions? Other questions? We, we did meet with the finance committee last night, so we went into more detail, but we did want to make sure we gave this report tonight, too.
Could I make one, or could you make it very clear because you, you mentioned it, but I think it really is important for people to know if the council chambers are going to be on the second floor?
Yes.
That there, you said elevator, but you said it so quickly. I just want to make sure those who might have issues will have access to the council chambers.
So, that's right. So as you come through security, there's a lobby, there's a very nice, large, comfortable stair going up, not quite like this one, more, bigger treads, more comfortable stair, and there's an ADA accessible elevator that goes up just for that purpose.
I think you said last night, based on what you're thinking now, there would be five elevators?
Yes.
In the whole?
Yes.
And four of those would be public access?
Yes.
For public access.
Yes. Yeah, we, the, the priority is public service and public safety and we're trying to make sure that we do everything possible to accommodate all of the nuances of those two priorities for your project.
Any other questions for Roy?
I think I heard that we had remodeled, wasn't it in the paper, there's been about 20 remodels or something on this building in the past?
I, I don't know, there could have been. It's, it's been a, it's been a fast 25 years in this building, I'll tell you.
You've made reference to building a 100-year building and I think that would, if we're going to spend this kind of money, that, that would be a great thing to know that for the next however long, we're going to be able to stay in this building.
The key, the key is not so much that we do magical things, it's that we, that we make sure we recognize that a building has different ages, that the building itself, the structure, the enclosure, the roof, that each of those systems have age limits. And what we want to do is the, the things that we consider, the, the, the infrastructure, the things that are not going to change, we want to build those as well and as durable as we can. Offices are going to change a lot. Mechanical systems, they have a 25-year life. Data systems, five years. You're going to be changing wires out every five, five to 10 years on data systems. So, so we want to build the infrastructure for long-term. We want to make sure that we can change out those other systems easily without disrupting the building in each of their life limits. So, so that kind of planning has to go into the building for its life.
So we're planning in, that's, that's what the programming is about, the planning in 25 years of...
Yep.
Of growth.
Yep.
Also, a question I didn't ask last night, I mean, the new building, 100-year building, the renovation on this building, and I, and the last thing I want to do is insinuate that this building, I mean, we, we did what we could do, I'm sure.
No, no, and, and we're going to take this building back to structure and we're going to try to build it to the same standards.
Okay.
The, the structure here, the foundation are in good shape. So we're going to, we're going to take and, and get the value out of this building that it has and we're going to extend its life, so.
Great.
And, and, and Mike and his team are going to help us build with craft and with skill and with good discipline in terms of management of the subcontractors to do it efficiently.
Great. Okay, anything else? All right. Thank you, Roy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Item eight, street and CIP committee report and recommendations, Chairman Rick Evans. Rick?
Good to meet you last week, street and CIP. We have two resolutions, one ordinance on the agenda tonight. All three of them are recommended for approval. And the first one is a resolution authorizing and funding a contract for pre-construction services on the criminal justice complex, and this is the contract with Milestone for $13,150.
Okay.
Realize, the resolution passed.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Let me just add that we had, we did have council representation on this, on this selection committee. Councilman Jim Reed was on the committee along with several staff and myself and had a lot of good, good firms that, that we interviewed and it was not an easy decision, but, but we strongly recommend Milestone Construction for this project. So any other comments or questions before? We, we do have a motion and a second. Anyone? Okay, Denise.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
371.
And next on the genie, we have a resolution authorizing execution of a contract for appraisal services for the Jean George Boulevard project from Blue Avenue to Elm Springs Road, and establish a budget for said project. This is to kind of get us ahead of the game, what we talked about. And Brad, if you want to, Brad, you want to come and explain?
Brad, just briefly, give us a quick summary of what it is you presented to committee and what they've...
Six weeks ago, about, I came to, about six weeks ago, I came to committee and presented an approach to move toward our bond program. We wanted to get a head start because there's a lot of work, and we wanted to make sure we had it designed and bid in a timely manner. So, this is kind of the first step of what that proposal was. This Jean George Boulevard from Blue up to Elm Springs Road was designed during our previous bond program. And so, what we're doing here is asking for funding to do the appraisals. We have right-of-way drawings already prepared, so we're asking to be able to proceed with the appraisals and setting a budget for vetting the utilities along that right-of-way.
Okay. We don't have a...
Has the resolution been read?
Yes, Rick read it.
I'll move the resolution pass.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion?
I just have the same problem with this resolution I had at committee. We're gonna be spending $1,636 per appraisal, and the fact that we cannot take bids on it, I know we've been told that it's impossible to take bids on it because they are professionals, but we keep escalating our cost to the taxpayers for all these appraisals, and I find it a little hard to support.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Anybody else?
Did they, I know we discussed that, is there, because it's professional services, we can't get bids from...
Right, you choose, and Ernest can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but you choose, it's like an architect or you choose the, who's gonna be providing the service, and then you negotiate price.
Is that pretty comparable to what we've paid in the past?
As we paid in the past was $1,400.
That would have been probably...
That was when we did all...
It's been in the 12 bond issue.
Yes, that's when we did all the bonds, and I didn't support that.
Okay. Other questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise.
Overton?
No.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
371.
And last on the Street and CIP committee is an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the overlay of Emin Avenue, and this is basically to take the, what they're working on the east end of Avenue, from Emin Avenue from Berry Street, Highway 265, and go ahead and let the same company do it now, which is Hudson Construction, and contract is not to exceed $145,456.25, which they will be milling it down and then resurfacing it.
And this money will be coming from Sam's...
Sam's budget.
Street budget.
Will the ordinance pass?
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Why would we not have competitive...
I'm up here. You can answer this, Ernest.
Why wouldn't we have competitive bidding on something like that?
This is a, they are already in the, they're already doing the work on East Avenue.
Okay, so we're gonna continue with the folks that are already doing the work on the road?
Yes. And they're, and we have a good history with this company. And Sam, he knows quantities and he knows prices, and he has assured us that this price is a fair price.
Okay, I just, you know, you get two different people wanting to do the job, you get one of them that's gonna come in there and do it for 50 cents cheaper.
Yeah.
And everybody knows we ain't got a spare 50 cents around here to begin with.
Okay. Just to feed on that a little bit, though, the other side of that is the lowest price isn't always the best job. So, you gotta have people you're confident in, too. But that's a good point. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Denise.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Will the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Mayor, just to follow up on what the question that David had, you know, we kind of forget sometimes that we take these issues up in committee and talk about these kind of things. And then we come here on council night, and it's almost like we've already hashed all that out, and we forget that the public probably has questions about why we're waiving competitive bidding. So, it was certainly not a bad question, it was a good question, but we just sometimes need to remember maybe to explain ourselves.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. Item nine, Health Sanitation and Property Maintenance Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Jim Reed. Jim?
We had a meeting on, this is an ordinance, ordering the raising and removal of a certain residential structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at 10671 West Gibbs Road, and declared emergency for other purposes, committee recommended approval. And I'm gonna turn it over to Tom.
How you doing, counsel, mayor? This property is the property on Gibbs Road. I actually did it by parcel number because it had come in the city in 2011, and the addresses were somewhat different. So, the address that you have is actually the old county address, which was like 10-something, I believe it is. What they have it down is. Anyway, parcel number 001-18891-000 is what I went by. These are several outbuildings and/or older migrant homes that the family has had on this property since the father actually had, I guess, some sort of a farming operation there many, many years ago. I don't know if the Millers are here tonight. Don't see anybody saying that they're here. I did reach out to the daughter and told her about the meeting again, but I haven't heard back from them. But this is a house, like I said, when I first went after this house in 2012, which was March of 2012, and I got some pictures coming around, there's, I think there's three migrant homes on here that are beyond usefulness, I mean, they're not worth saving. There was three outbuildings, and that's all I really went for at the time. Even when I addressed it in my letter here, I just talked about the houses and like the garage, didn't really address the main house. So, at this point, I'm just looking at these outbuildings and these migrant-type homes, so...
I'm very familiar with this area and these buildings, and I'm gonna move this ordinance fast.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone that needs to speak to this? Doesn't look like it. Okay. If there's nothing else from the council, then I'll ask for the vote.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Will the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Will the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
So, mayor, with that emergency clause passing, then, so if I haven't heard from them or something in 31 days, and you want me to do it, we don't want to worry about...
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, before I turn it over to you on finance committee, back to your point, and it was a good one, and I think David also, David reminded us that we need to do a better job, I do, for sure, of just not assuming that everybody knows what all was discussed and the reasons something has come with recommendation that has. But I also want to remind the public, this is a good opportunity, to remind everyone that all our committee meetings are public meetings also, and they're open, and we meet on the first and third Monday of every week upstairs.
Every month.
Did I say, what did I say?
Every week.
I said first and third Monday of every week?
Yes.
Well, that'd be a trick. So, of every month. And so, certainly, and those agendas are public, and they're released just like our council agendas, and so, we would invite any of the public, if you want to see a little more about how sausage is made, you're welcome to come to our committee meetings, and you're welcome to give input there also, so...
We actually have one, I think, on the 31st this month.
This month, because of the way the calendar falls, we're going to do the July 31st and then the second Monday. Right. So, it'll be a little different, or third Monday.
And mayor, also, what's previously been brought out is the fact that Sam Goze had extensive experience with this particular contractor, is well aware of their performance level, and as you mentioned, he already has the funds in his budget for this, and this saves his crews to do other jobs, so it is not any expenditure, any new money.
Right. Thanks, Mike. Okay. All that said, I'm gonna move to item 10, Finance Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Jeff Watson.
So, one of those committee meetings, the last one, we also had a finance committee, and the two items that item 10 were discussed. The first one was a resolution accepting a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration and authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement. Wyman or someone address this?
Wyman, you want to come up and give us a...
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second now. If there are any questions for Wyman, give us just a short recap.
This is a 90% grant from FAA to rejuvenate the runway and replace the taxi lots. It's a design only, this will do the design, we'll get a grant next year to do the actual construction.
Okay.
We'll get a 10% grant from the state, so we'll eventually end up getting 100%.
So, the 10%, we have to pay, and it's a reimbursement grant?
Correct.
Okay.
Wyman, I hate, I'm watching out there, I don't think most people can hear what you just said, Wyman. Am I correct? I could see everybody like this. So, can we try again? It's not your fault, Wyman, the acoustics in this place make it very difficult.
We're gonna fix that.
I know. But it's not tonight. So, to help them hear what you're saying, please...
It's a 90% grant from FAA to, for the engineers to design a rejuvenation of the runway and replacement of the taxi lots. We'll get a 10% grant from the state, so we'll wind up getting 100% grant for the project. Next year, we'll get a grant to do all the construction.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Okay, Denise.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
371.
All right, item 12, oh, I'm sorry, item 11, Police and Fire Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Rick Culver. Rick?
Mayor, unfortunately, I wasn't there that night, and I'm not sure who took it.
I took the committee, mayor. It was a resolution supporting the decision of the Springdale Police Chief to contract for wrecker service, and the committee recommended approval.
Okay.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is for support, to support the chief's decision and the committee's decision. Mike, you want to, if you want me to go into it? Back in February, we started looking at the option of going to a sole-source wrecker instead of having a rotation. We looked at other departments that have done that, and it seemed to be a great benefit, and it would have, it would address a lot of issues that we've had.
We formed a committee. The committee went through a process with public meetings, took proposals from wreckers, went through a selection process, and they come to the decision to sole-source with Northwest Arkansas Wrecker Company. The contract says that the Northwest Arkansas Wrecker Company will open a business in the Springdale city limits, so they will be a Springdale business. It also has a price list and all of the particulars on how they will operate. So, we can hold them to that contract, which I think will provide a much better service to our citizens.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Mike, how many companies did we have?
We had 19.
Had 19, we have 19 that we were using.
Correct, on our rotation.
How many actually submitted?
14. 14 submitted proposals to be...
And you narrowed it down to, the committee narrowed it down to two or four?
They narrowed it down to four, and then they met again, they narrowed it down to two. We did some extensive checking on the two that was the finalists, and Northwest Arkansas was the final...
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, I've been told, I think you guys said in committee, that we would have an emergency rotation for if and when things, you know, if they got backed up or something.
Yes. If for some reason Northwest Arkansas can't provide a tow, we will have other wreckers available. If that is a continuous problem, that would be a breach of contract, but hopefully, you know, that would never happen.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I would suggest that you get those companies that are back, that you want to back up.
Sure.
In some kind of contract, too, otherwise, they could charge any price they wanted.
I want to get through this meeting, and then we're gonna have a meeting with them, and we're gonna say, these are the rules if you want to be our backup.
Right.
So, I agree with you. Thanks.
And just so residents understand, these are non-consent toes?
Correct. Anytime a citizen has a preference, we'll call the wrecker they want.
Okay.
And the contract is for three years? Is it three years? Just help me.
I believe it's for one year and then renewed, correct?
That's the, okay.
It's for one year, and then it renews for a five-year term.
And then there's a 60-day notice if the city or the company chooses not to remain partners.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
How long until the company would come into Springdale?
We're gonna give them six months to relocate to the city.
They don't have to relocate, they can just expand here.
Correct, yes. To have a location in the city that they're operating from.
Right. Is that, would that be a breach of contract if they don't?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll be written in the contract that they have to do that.
And then there's a 60-day notice if, if the city or the company chooses not to remain-
Yes.
-partners.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
How long until the, the company would come into Springdale?
We're gonna give them six months to relocate to the city.
They don't have to relocate, they can just expand here.
Correct, yes, to, to have a, a location in the city that they're operating from.
Right. Is that a, would that be a breach of contract if they don't?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that'll be written in the contract that they have to do that.
Okay.
Good. I'll, I'll say this, I had to have my car towed the other day, and I thought, well, I'm gonna test out the company that we're supposed to have, so I called them, and congratulations, it only took 13 minutes, and I was able to pay real quick and get it done, and so, congra, that was a great service.
You did that on purpose, huh? Okay, I think we had one comment, please come to the microphone, sir.
I'm Michael Paul, I, I'm not sure, but I think I read in the paper that Northwest Arkansas towing just took a contract with City of Fayetteville, is that the same?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, no, no conflict of interest for the city?
No, as long as they can, as long as they can abide by the terms of the contract.
Okay, I, I have a tenant who has a towing business, and he's just going crazy with all the competition, and I thought I'd ask for him, too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Sure, come on up.
Hi, I'm sorry, I wish I'd addressed a little better for the occasion, but it looks like I was working today, but I wanna introduce myself to the council and everybody else in here, I'm Peyton Hillis, I'm one of the owners, NWA towing, me and my wife, and when this situation came up, we thought it'd be a great decision for me and my family and all of my staff to, to try this out and see how it worked. We've always done a great job with everybody we've done work with, including Fayetteville Police Department, we, I kinda look at this as a family, just, so you get a little background about me, I was raised on a cotton soybean farm, didn't have, ever have a lot of money, but I always worked for everything I ever had, it's always been from my hard work and God's grace that I got as far as I could've gotten, but, you know, during this process, I see that, you know, you're always gonna ruffle little feathers here and now and then, and I apologize for all of that, but I wanted just to introduce myself, so y'all can get to know me, put a name with a face, but, you know, I got in the towing business because I've always, always had a job or been with people that you're kinda in a camaraderie setting, somewhere or something that you always hang out with the guys and do, you know, whatever you can do to get along, but, you know, when I got out of football, I mean, I had brain hemorrhaging, had bleeding on the brain, I couldn't play no more, so I had to look to something else for me to do, that I can still have that camaraderie and still have things to do, I was always been very involved with the Wonders Warriors Project, NYPD, and I see what those guys have to go through, and so, anytime that I can get involved with the police department or anything else, 'cause I know what kinda service we can give you, and I wanted to make it easier on you guys, and also, since I didn't grow up from a wealthy family, I do know that just because of your circumstances, how you were born into this world, you don't get to choose, and so, for a lot of my guys, I know that a lot of them barely have a high school education, they never could go to college and never had the money, but we set this business up as a profession to where you can make really, really great money, you have health benefits, and as much as you wanna put your hands to work, you will make the money, and so, I'm trying to bring jobs to this city, I'm trying to make a good impression, I mean, my wife's family's from here, we're moving here, and my son's going to Shiloh in the fall, but, you know, I just, really just wanna stand up here, so you can put a name to a face, and understand that I have no bad intentions towards anybody, I understand that people probably have some towards me, but at the end of the day, God bless you, I love you, and hopefully that, at the end of the day, I can show y'all what we can do, and that we'll do, have a big benefit for the City of Springdale.
Great, thanks, Peyton. All right, any other, if there's no other comments, I'll call for the vote.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Carrie 7-1.
Thank you. Item 12, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations, and I believe our city attorney is taking that tonight.
Thank you, mayor, there are two items that are coming from the Planning Commission, the first item is a resolution dealing with the waiver of subdivision regulations, the title of the resolution is a resolution approving a waiver of subdivision regulations as set forth in Chapter 112 of the Springdale Code of Ordinances in connection with LS-17-22, a lot split for Ecclesia Inc., located north of Kerry Smith Road, east side of Highway 112.
Will the resolution pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments or questions? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carrie 8-0.
Next item is an ordinance rezoning property located at 503 Spring Street from light industrial I-1 to low mi, low medium-density, single-family residential District SF-2, Planning Commission recommended approval of the ordinance, and the title of the ordinance is an ordinance amending, ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining there, too, by rezoning certain lands from light industrial I-1 to low medium-density, single-family residential District SF-2, and declaring an emergency.
Will the ordinance pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments or questions?
I'd just like to say, mayor, I'm all for this ordinance, unfortunately, I have to recuse because I own property next door.
Okay, all right, anyone else?